Organized by the Northampton Mayor's Youth Commission and co-sponsored by lots of youth advocacy and activism groups from Northampton High School and from the community. I'm really excited that all of you are here, whether you're a young person or a less young person, whether or not you're going to be voting in this upcoming election. It's really inspiring to see this many people showing up on a Monday night to engage in local politics and to listen to young people's voices. So, you know, we have so many important issues that are really scaring young people right now, whether it's the recent climate reports that warn that we have to cut our carbon emissions in half by 2030 or face irreversible consequences. It's projected, you know, whether it's that we, in projected by 2053, the median African-American net worth will be zero. We have migrants from South and Central America looking for work in the United States and young people being separated from their families at the border. You know, we have billions, hundreds of billions of dollars being spent on the, in the, by the US federal government on the military and about an eighth of that being spent on education. At this time in American history, when we have so many of these crucial issues that are really important to younger generations that are being left completely unaddressed, it's really important that everybody, including candidates for local elected office, listen to the voices of young people. By showing up tonight, all of you are doing that, and we couldn't be more grateful. So without any further ado, I want to introduce our moderator for tonight's city council candidate forum, who is a member of the Northampton Mayor's Youth Commission along with me, Adina Bromberg-Seltzer.
Good evening, everyone again. I'd like to thank all of you, especially our seven candidates, for making it to our forum tonight. Now let's begin. Tonight, each of our nine youth concert, youth co-sponsor organizations will get to ask the seven candidates a question specifically related to the group's mission. Each candidate will have 60 seconds to respond to each question. If any candidate is invoked in another candidate's sponsor, they will have 30 seconds to respond. We are now going to ask, we are also going to ask each candidate to six to 60 seconds so we can be sure to have enough time for all of our questions. Each of the candidates may now have 30 seconds to introduce themselves, beginning with Michael Quinlan.
Good evening, I'm Michael Quinlan, candidate for city council in Ward One. I'm thrilled to be here, I'm a big fan of the Youth Commission. I have two children that both attended Northampton High and they were in the Youth Commission. I also attended Northampton High, graduating in 1989, and I live at 712 Bridge Road and I'm really, like I said, honored to be here. Thank you.
All right, so my name is Andrew Smith, I'm also a candidate for Ward One. I have three kids and mainly the reason why I'm running is because I know that by the time a lot of them are your age in high school, some of the problems that I, we all foresee and we all understand and experience may or may not be solved. And I want to get involved so I can at least contribute to solutions. So yeah, my kids go to, the schools here, they're going to go to Jackson Street and on up. But I think the looming things that your generation and my kids' generation will have to deal with are so critically important and I believe that my ideas are relevant to you for that reason.
Hi there, I'm Karen Foster, I am running in Ward Two. And similar to Andrew, my children were sort of a driving force in my decision to run. I have an eight-year-old who goes to Bridge Street and a four-year-old who will be heading to Bridge Street. And, you know, as I look at the issues facing the young generation, I want to be sure that my voice is a part of the solution and I'm excited to be a part of this process here on the municipal level.
Hi, I'm Alex Jarrett, I am a candidate for Ward Five, City Council. I live in Florence, been here for 21 years. And for the last 17, I've been the co-founder and the treasurer of the Pedal People Cooperative Business, committed to the environment and to worker rights. And I'm also a member of the Northampton Housing Partnership, which is the city board that works for affordable housing. And I've also been before the Youth Commission to work on the issue of sidewalk plowing.
Good evening, I'm David Murphy, also an alumni of Northampton High School quite some time ago. I am currently the incumbent Ward Five City Councilor and is a position I've held for 14 years. I'm running for reelection.
I'm Penny Geis, and if it looks like I'm trying to hide, no, I'm just trying to see you. I live in Ward Seven. I have a lifetime of experience in local government and I have three grandchildren who are in the Northampton Public Schools. It's because of them and because of the rest of you who are young people that I'm running. I'm particularly interested in climate change, we have to fix this, and there are some things we can reel, on-the-ground things we can do as a local government that will help with that. And she's waving a piece of paper, does that mean my time is up? Okay.
We totally can't see you. Like, okay.
Hey there, good evening, thanks for being here. My name is Rachel Maori, running for city council, Ward Seven. I fell in love with Northampton when I lived here as an undergraduate, now I have the pleasure of raising my three little boys here and I just feel that I have a lot of agency here, especially as frustration grows on larger levels. I think Northampton could be a great model for the changes we'd like to see at larger levels. Thank you.
Thank you all. Now for our first question. We have a representative from the Northhamptons Mayor's Youth Commission.
This is not on, but, yeah, so my name is Eila Marley, I'm our representative of the Northampton Mayor's Youth Commission. So over the past few years, Northampton young people have shown their steadfast commitment to actively, consistently, gain awareness and positive change. Time and time again, young people in Northampton have organized blockouts, strikes, marches, town halls, and debates, and have advanced with climate action, joint control legislation, and various other initiatives. In this context, as city councils, would you support the Northampton Mayor's Youth Commission's efforts to lower the municipal voting age to 16?
Okay, sorry for everybody back there who could not hear that at all. The question, this mic is not working. The question is about whether these candidates as city councilor would support the Northampton Mayor's Youth Commission's efforts to lower the municipal voting age to 16.
The first candidate answering this question will be Michael Quinlan, running for Ward One.
In short, yes, I support this idea completely. My son Tucker was mayor of the Youth Commission last year and worked hard on this. We had many debates in the House so that we all got on the same page and understood what was happening. And I, there's one very important quote, which was a quote from Noah Cassis at the Charter Review Commission when they asked him, "What do you think the level of engagement would be for young people in voting?" And Noah's response was, "At least the same as the older people." And I've always kind of adopted that as well, I think it would be great to engage the younger people in voting, and I, and I have full faith that they would take it as seriously as they need to.
Are we going down the line? Okay, cool. So yeah, similarly, in short, yes. I think what you'll find amongst the people up here is, I think most of us will say that I don't know anybody who wouldn't. And I think the reason why is because obviously you've, you've organized this forum in a short period of time. There's a lot of discussion about habits that young people should or should not form. Don't smoke, you know, that's a bad habit. But there's not much discussion about good habits, and I think voting is a good habit. And I think if we get people started young in life on voting, then we have a lifetime of voters ahead of us. And also, I think it's kind of like we have different circumstances for the moment in time that we're in. And I think people who are under the age of 18 are obviously stakeholders in the future. They've been, you have been boxed out of decision-making processes at the federal level, and so we need to remedy that at the local level and give you the, give you a voice. Can I make a suggestion? Can you like wave a phone or something? Because the, the piece of paper is, is just, is, it's not, or like a light, or like something with a light source? Because it's, it's the disparity in light, that's the only thing, so.
And also, yes, I would support lowering the voting age to 16. My first job, actually, I was a ninth-grade history teacher in Pittsfield. I taught history and I saw up close and personal what young people are capable of when given the opportunity, and I think the youth here in Northampton have absolutely exemplified that. I remember after the March for Our Lives, overhearing some community members talking and somebody saying, "That was the best event I have ever been to in Northampton, the most well-run." And it's true, we see it time and time again, that the youth are energized, you're engaged, this is your fight too, and I see no reason why we wouldn't lower the voting age to 16.
My answer is also yes. As I've been going door-to-door, often people who are under 18 will answer the door and, you know, I'll, I'll go right into my spiel right away and, because I want to hear those voices as well. And there's, I hear back in terms of, you know, what the issues are. And I think we often don't, we have low expectations for younger people and, you know, lowering the voting age and asking people to be civically engaged is about raising those expectations and say, you know, "Yes, you are ready for this, you, we want your participation," and given the future and the circumstances we're dealing with now, I think that's very important to get people involved at an earlier age.
The Northampton City Council had a resolution before several months ago with regards to supporting this issue. Many of you came to speak at the city council when that was on the floor. We voted in favor of that resolution, I voted for that resolution, so yes, I do support your efforts for the 16-year-old vote.
Yes, and if you want to vote, it's important that you lobby at the state level because there has to be a state law to make it happen.
Yeah, I'm for lowering the voting age to 16. I think we, the stats show it establishes civic engagement, lifelong good habits if we do so. Now more than ever, I think 16-year-olds should be able to have a vote on their, the things that affect their lives most directly. And, you know, I remember myself as a high school, engaged high school person who, I did sit-ins to bring Martin Luther King as a national holiday to our area and also around nuclear disarmament. And I think if I had been able to vote, I would have actually been, been more engaged earlier at the local level and understood that. I would have felt more like I had a, a place at the table in my community then.
Our next question will come from Northampton Sunrise Movement Chapter.
Hi, I'm Jordan Windsor and I'm one of the co-coordinators of Sunrise Northampton, which is the local chapter of the National Sunrise Movement. So as Noah mentioned earlier, the IPCC report from October of 2018 tells us that we have to reach, we have to cut our carbon emissions in half by 2030 and we have to reach carbon neutrality by 2050 in order to avoid 1.5 degrees Celsius of warming. So my question for you is, given that last year, Northampton, the Northampton City Government set the goal of carbon neutrality by 2050, what specific ordinances will you put in place in order to make sure that this goal is met? Thank you.
This question will be done by being answered by Andrew Smith, running for Ward One, and we'll continue down the line.
So, so this one's a difficult question for me to answer because I recently got hired on the statewide task force that formulates climate policy for cities and towns and throughout the Commonwealth. So due to the fact that that's my employment, I can't really talk about it because it's a public position. I will, can, I can just say that personally, I think this past summer, I usually, I mostly focused on mitigation efforts, which is reducing, reduction of greenhouse gas emissions. And I have, after seeing what happened over the summer, you know, seeing some of the things that have been, you know, forecasted by science take place, I decided to shift over more towards the adaptation world, which is changing society in a way that makes us more ready for bouncing back from the effects of climate change. So I've got so many ideas, but to the fact that I have eight pages of rules and regulations I have to follow around this particular incident, I can't really express them. Or I shouldn't, if I want to stay in play.
So one of my understandings is that Northampton has committed to being carbon neutral by 2050, but there is some question about what kind of measurable outcomes and benchmarks that might take. And I think a role of a city council is to eye decisions that are being made, whether it's budget or ordinances or legislation, with an eye toward climate change. And that is something that I would have in the forefront of decisions that I make. And, you know, it might not seem related, but at the school committee forum last week, we might not be thinking about school committees and climate change, but looking at grant programs to purchase electric school buses. And I think that that kind of eye and that kind of creativity can go cross-department from vehicle purchases to, you know, clearing sidewalks so that we reduce vehicle trips in the winter, to budgeting. So kind of a very global perspective on that.
Right. The, the specific question was, what ordinances will we pass? And that is one of the rights that the city council, the powers that that has. So a net, having new municipal buildings be net-zero energy would be great. We could think about food waste and we could think about, so food waste and is, is one of the contributors, especially when food waste goes into the landfills, and then that produces methane, which is a very potent greenhouse gas. So we could encourage composting and we could specifically work to, you know, like we talk about banning particular types of like single-use plastic and styrofoam and such, and we could replace those, what will the replacement be of that? Is that 15 or?
Zero.
Okay. The, so the community choice aggregation that we're working on right now, that we're moving toward using, is another great place where we can help to reduce our energy use and have that come from renewable sources.
Thank you. Back in 2014, I was in the Northampton Clean Energy Working Group, we came up with Clean Energy Roadmap. It was a 48-page report, which the city has been following to this point in an effort to become a greener place to live. We passed resolutions on fossil fuel divestment, opposing the Tennessee Gas Pipeline, asking the legislature to adopt carbon pricing, becoming a blue community for clean water in favor of 100% renewable energy, opposed to expanding gas infrastructure, support of the Green New Deal, and also voting to participate in the Community Choice Energy Program. Was on the building committee for the last major construction project, which is with the police station, which is Leeds Gold Building. And I know in front of capital improvements now, we have a request from the mayor to do a two-year study of all of our municipal buildings to make sure they have a minor footprint and, and also to do some solar canopies over a couple of parking lots. So we're doing a lot. Thank you.
There are two particular problem, programs that I would like to push. One of them has been mentioned, the electricity aggregation program. This is something that I began working on 20-some years ago when I was invited to come in and help word the language that allows municipalities to do this. So I'm really excited that the city is moving forward with this. And in addition to getting good rates for people and buying greener energy, the part that really excites me is taking that money that would go off to some profit-making entity or person somewhere else and keeping it here, using it to build green energy that's local. And I would hope we would also build in some battery and the ability to separate ourselves from the grid when it goes down and maintain some critical services within the city for ourselves. Was that my stop sign? And, and the other thing that I have worked on is with the city, is to help people reduce the power that they use in their homes by, we called it the Heat Smart Program. People can stay warm with using less energy, the greenest energy is the energy you don't use.
My cat would really like that flashing light. She was here. Um, yeah, this is an all-hands-on-deck situation, and to meet that goal, we're going to have to really be, it's going to be, everyone in the community has to be involved. And really civic engagement is a big part of that, getting more voices at the table, more representation. In terms of ordinances, I'd like to expand the plastics ban around styrofoam and look at straws and, you know, really concrete things we're doing, we could do at the municipal level. Yeah, community choice energy is a great thing, taking advantage of state grants and conversion grants, and Massachusetts is second only to New York in old homes, so we're going to have to look at that. And as a public health person, I really want that goal, that, it's great we have that goal, I'd like that goal to be sooner and maybe like 40 or 45% in 2035. I think it's easier to meet goals if you have those metrics be closer, so that's what I will be advocating for.
The city council and other departments in Northampton are already looking at this International Energy Conference, Conservation Code, which is, you know, all about designing energy efficient and implementing zoning laws and all sorts of other permitting laws that, that would, you know, limit the, the use of, you know, the, the emissions of greenhouse gas here. So this is important because IACC draws on hundreds of plumbers, building experts, scientists and so forth to create this code. And it's really something that the city's already working on, I would look forward to being a part of that. In addition to that, Mr. Murphy mentioned last week that the city's allocated only $50,000 for the improvements of, you know, sidewalks, which is a paltry sum considering the size of our budget. And I think if we can make the city more walkable, more bikeable, that would be a huge, huge win. And, you know, again, doing some of that stuff would lead not only to less emissions, but also to a healthier citizen group.
Thank you. Our next question will come from Northampton High School's Gender and Sexuality Alliance.
Hi, my name's Nina Young, I'm a co-leader of the NHS Gender and Sexuality Alliance. My question is about the disproportionate effects of homelessness on LGBT youth. How do you plan on supporting these youth and the homeless population in general in our community? Thank you.
First to answer this question will be Karen Foster, who is running for Ward Two.
I think that, that one of the roles our leadership has is setting a tone. I am a member of the LGBT community and I wanted to raise my children in Northampton because my family fits in here. And I think that that, that leadership and support from the community level, because it's true that so many LGBT youth don't have that support at home, which can then have this cascade effect that can lead to homelessness among the LGBT population. But a community that supports LGBT youth and that, that goes through the schools and through community leadership and no tolerance for, for hate is, is one place to start. I am very interested in looking at how we in Northampton can support the homeless community sort of on a broader level. I think harm reduction strategies are the direction that we need to be going and looking at how can we, what are the underlying causes? And I know that there's a report coming out, but, you know, to, to really understand and address the underlying causes while also really making a push toward harm reduction.
So first, my first philosophy is to, when thinking about particular groups, is to reach out to those populations and to get advice. So I would say, I would ask LGBTQ youth who are, and those who are homeless, you know, what do you see, what, what if, what are you thinking? And then, thinking about housing in particular, I would love to see what's called a Housing First Initiative. And that's where, if you look at the outcomes of, of what happens with people in terms of the issues of, you know, the, like, healthcare and that if you, if people have housing first, that they're good, the outcomes are so much greater. Additionally, there's an economic element where if we look at all the costs involved of treating people who are homeless, that we're having to spend a lot of money on emergency room visits instead of people going to the doctor's offices. So thinking in that way and not in a punitive way.
Unfortunately, the city itself is not set up to directly provide these services, but we do do it through people like Wayfinders, like ServiceNet, like Valley CDC. We just, through the CPA, the largest amount of money that we have to put towards homeless issues comes from the Community Preservation Funds. And they were used extensively to do 155 Pleasant, which is affordable, to do the lumberyard, which is affordable. It funds, the money from that helps ServiceNet with the Grove Street Inn and helps a number of other programs that help people that have housing issues. But again, the city is not set up really to be a direct provider, but we are able through Community Preservation Act funds to do that and write grants in support of homelessness. I also was a member of the Housing Partnership some time ago, and that's pretty much the best way the city itself could, could contribute to trying to solve the homeless problem.
For 20-some years, you see, I'm a, I'm one of those formerly young people. I have been on the United Way Committee for Emergency Food and Shelter. And it's clear to me from listening to other people on that committee who deal with people who need food and people who need a place to live, that our most important problem in that arena is shelter by far, much more than food. And that is a really difficult thing to provide. There's very little money to do it, thank goodness, the city puts some money into that. I'd like to see us change our zonings so that we can have tiny houses throughout the city so that people who want to rent out their property can have a, a little more income. But the homelessness, the low-income housing can be scattered throughout really nice neighborhoods. People don't have to be clustered with low-income people, and that probably says something which I can't see.
Yeah, so it's critical for youth to have, point people outside their family, especially LGBTQ youth who, if, if they're not being supported by their family, we can intervene sooner before we get to a place of being without a home. Houselessness is an issue that, is just one issue of many for folks. So I, I think that's something that we really need to think differently about. I really feel we need permanent options for folks. And I actually think it would be more affordable in the long run. We need permanent home offerings for people without, without homes and we need, you know, we need a community that shows up for its youth and can support them in those, those times where we have an opportunity to intervene before they're on the streets.
On a, on a recent evening, I was driving home from work and I heard a story on NEPR about discrimination over sexuality and this community that, that didn't stand up to its leadership, when the leadership didn't stand up for them. And it was amazing because what happened was the community really came together and created a couple of, you know, venues for, for people around homeless issues, around LGBTQ issues, to, to really create drop-in centers and this sort of thing so that the engagement could happen. That same night when I was home, a friend of mine who lives in Sturbridge proposed to his church that they create a drop-in center in the church for just this community that we're talking about here. And I was so stunned that it happened, that I heard the story in the afternoon and then read on Facebook that my friend was doing this in the evening. And it struck me that, that this is a way to engage and this is a way to help protect people that, that need assistance. And so I would be, be proud to work on something like that.
So thanks. So I grew up in the deep south, right? So this isn't, didn't come first nature to me, so I only come to this as a, a convert later in life, right? And I remember when I was, when I was in a band in Northampton, my guitar player and I, we were, we were roommates together, and she grew up in California. And her family had turned their backs on her because she came out at a young age. And just the pain and isolation and alienation she felt in explaining how she almost became homeless. And, you know, I, I never have felt that, right? But I know just from seeing how much it hurt her to have her family turn away from her, I can't imagine how that would feel to I can imagine how that would feel to somebody else. It probably feels worse than death, right? So I think the city does a lot of things right, and this is one of the things the city does right. My understanding is that the CPA allocated funds to a youth, homeless youth, for a center for housing for LGBTQ teens. So I think that's a good thing. I think those are initiatives that should be pursued and followed up on.
Our next question will come from the Northampton High School Student Union.
Hi, my name's Lizzie Broder. I'm a sophomore representative of the student union.
My name's Colin Evans. Hi, everybody. And I'm a representative for the student union, freshman representative.
Okay, so our question is vaping, especially juling, has become an epidemic in high schools across America, and Northampton is no exception.
And in the context of several deaths due to vaping and statewide ban on the sale of jewels, so question is, what will you do to curb vaping in our Hampton public schools?
First answering this question will be Alex Jarrett, running for Ward Five.
So, you know, certainly the school committee would have more power in terms of actually taking effect in the schools. But my thoughts on it are, you know, one, you know, we have companies that are marketing and selling this to children even if they're not intending that. We have people who are addicted, and we need to think about, does a punishment model work? And instead, how can we have help available for people without having to worry about whether, okay, I'm going to be penalized if I even admit that this is happening to me? And then the other thought is about essentially peer workers, people who have lived experience, people who, you know, have been addicted to cigarettes or vaping and can come in and be there, including other students. So those are some thoughts on it.
Yeah, I'm going to agree with Alex. This really falls within the schools more under the school committee and in the general community under the Board of Health. But addiction is the crisis of our times, and solving it, whether it be cigarettes or vaping or heroin or prescription drugs, it is a real epidemic. And it goes well beyond the scope of anyone in Northampton, the Board of Health, the school committee, the city council, the mayor, statewide, national. How do you deal with addictive behavior, especially when it's not in someone's best interest? At least vaping isn't going to kill you when you do it today, but some of the other addictions will kill you today. And it's well beyond the capacity of any one of the bodies in Northampton. Relative to the high school, I think it's an educational thing. That's the way you try and fix everything, is to educate people, the harm that it does to their bodies, the harm that it does to their lives, and in the long run, it may well kill them. So it's education on a local level, I believe.
I want to give a shout out to the Northampton Police Department. If you are suffering from any kind of addiction, they are a safe first stop to get help. They have, the Drug Addiction Response Team there makes a point of not using that kind of contact to find out where you got it or to punish people. They see their job as keeping people alive and helping people find treatment. So if you're on the street, if you know somebody that's having a problem, if you're having a problem, that's a safe place for you to get real caring help right away.
Yeah, I'm already scared about this. I have three kids. They're going to be in Northampton High School before I know it, and I'm preparing to deal with this. As a public health educator, I would like to echo what others have said, Alex has said about peer educating. You really need interventions actually before the behavior starts, quality, quality interventions, education, not scare tactics, but real getting, you know, education around this. We have the Vibrant Prevention Coalition in town that involves students. I think that's the right way to go on this.
It's interesting to go fifth and feel so similarly to what everyone has said. You know, it is about engagement. It is about engagement at younger ages. I think it's just tremendous that this is a concern for you about your fellow students. I think that that's really important. And I think that the adults, you know, who are elected to office, whether it be school committee or city council, should take this very seriously because, you know, like David said, I mean, he's 100% right, addiction is one of the great crises of our time. So that said, I agree with the rest of these five folks.
So I think, to follow up on the great crisis of our time, I think loneliness is really the great crisis of our time. As I've gone knocking on doors, I've gone around communities, and I've talked to people, the thing that most people want is to feel a sense of connection and to feel a sense of community. And we live in this sort of like spiritual, cultural dislocation of like staring at our phones, and that makes us feel like we're engaging but not really engaging, and we're all guilty of it, you know? And I think what we all want more than anything else is connection. And I think, so the vaping crisis is interesting because it happened because savvy marketers got hold of Instagram, and they were like, teenagers are on Instagram, let's sell this product to them. So realistically speaking, as like a middle, you know, guy in my 40s, like, I don't know what the next thing is that's going to be sold to kids in high school. I think really it's just listening to people and letting my own kids know that, you know, I'm here for them, and letting people know that kind of we're all in this together. So the addiction is really just a symptom of how broken people feel in relationship to the broader community that we all want to be a part of.
I was sort of heading down the road that Andrew took is, I mean, I know when I was in middle and high school how desperately I wanted to fit in. And, you know, for me, sports was my outlet. And I think finding a peer group is one of the things that so many teenagers are seeking, and whether that's theater or music or, you know, the Parks and Rec Department. There are so many opportunities for youth and making sure that we as a community and the schools are noticing youth who are not engaged in a positive peer group and sort of working on that. And I don't mean that to sound so pie in the sky, but if we're involved positively early, that's one strategy that just, I'm saying more because I haven't heard it yet because the other people up here have also given some really solid strategies. And there is a lot going on here in Northampton, and to make sure that we and you are all aware of resources out there for youth who are facing addiction.
Our next question will be coming from the Northampton High School Feminist Collective.
Hi, my name is Pearl Shred. I'm the leader of the Northampton Feminist Collective. My question is, what plans do you have to meet the needs of women in Northampton's growing homeless population?
First answering will be David Murphy, incumbent running for Ward Five.
I did not hear the end of the question.
How will you be helping homeless women specifically in Northampton?
Homeless women in Northampton, homeless people in Northampton, it's a crisis that crosses to both sides of sexuality. I mean, everybody's, everybody that's homeless is in crisis and everybody should be taken care of. And with our limited resources, it's really, really hard to specifically target one portion of that population. I think everybody needs to be helped. And unfortunately, the resources are limited. So I know all of the shelters and the subsidized housing people don't discriminate one way or the other, and I think it's very hard to ask them to do that. So while I have empathy for homeless women, I have empathy for everybody that's homeless. And I think it's very, very difficult for public entities to discriminate one way or the other.
We tend to think of women as being more in need of protection, but in fact, I think of women as being, having the potential to be as strong as any man. And when someone has no home to live in, whether they're a man or a woman, no matter what their orientation or their color or their religion, they're in trouble. And it's really incumbent on us to try to find a way to help them, which is why I've been working on this committee for so many years. And it's clear, both in interviewing the police officers who patrol our streets at night and in talking with other, with people who provide services to those without homes, this is one of the biggest problems we have. We have not enough places for people without a place to sleep safely. And we need to provide safety, both for those who are women and those who are men.
Yeah, so the first thing I would say is you really have to look at what particularly is going on with that demographic and with women who have no homes. I managed a domestic violence shelter when I lived in Boston, and I can tell you that that played into future, it was a predictor of homelessness for women there, because it also played into addiction rates and all sorts of things. So I think there are particular issues and interventions that would be particular to women without homes. And really, anything we do to raise the status of women, whether it's around wage, wages and labor, reproductive justice, or around domestic violence, these are going to help women, all women and women without homes especially.
Through some personal, you know, loss, I've become familiar with Safe Passages here. And, you know, it's something, I'm a member of the Whiting Street Fund Committee, and this is a committee that in Northampton has money that was left to the city for the betterment of what Mr. Street called the worthy poor. We've since used the money to help nonprofits that serve Northampton. And one of the things that I've done, you know, each year that I've been on the committee is reached out to Safe Passages to ask them to apply for some of the money because it's a cause that means an awful lot to me. So this is something that I feel a personal connection to, this is something that I feel is important to address. And through the chances that I've had so far, that's how I've been able to try to reach out.
So this one, there's no right answer to this. I feel like, you know, as a white male candidate, it's kind of hard for me to tell you like what I'm going to do to make lives better for women. I think what I will say is that, yeah, I'd be willing to step aside, right? Like, I'm not, I'm not the, I'm not the person who makes the decision. I'd be willing to listen to somebody else's needs. But I will say that when I've been knocking on doors, I've really heard some, not necessarily, I think there's ill-informed understanding of what it means to not have a home in America. And I really feel like we should make a point to just basically say that people are in our downtown because they feel safe downtown, because there are some places where people don't feel safe. And there are some places where people arrest homeless people. And I don't want to be that kind of community. So I think, you know, if it requires me getting out of the way to make room for a woman, then, yeah, then get me out of the way for that. That's my take on that situation.
So in my profession, I'm the executive director of All Out Adventures. We run outdoor recreation programs for people with disabilities, seniors and veterans. And a number of the veterans I work with do not have permanent housing. A lot of them live in the Soldier on Housing on the Leeds VA campus. And for many women, and not just this population, that's just where my personal experience is, it's recognizing that homelessness didn't just happen. It's very often a cascade that may have began. I was glad to hear Rachel and Michael bring it up, with domestic violence, sexual assault that may or may not then lead into some, you know, more mental health challenges, addiction. It tends to all be wrapped up in one very, very complicated package. And so supporting the organizations like Safe Passage, like ServiceNet, that are doing the work. And also, just on a personal note, the other day I found a cell, I live up the hill from the Grove Street Inn, found a cellphone from a resident there, and she stopped by my house to get it. And in front of my children, she was trying to tell me that she lives at the Grove Street Inn, but what she said was, "It's a shelter." Like it was something to be so ashamed of that my children shouldn't know about. And so there's just such a stigma, and there's so many things here wrapped up that we can address on lifting up organizations to policy, to just community conversation.
I think it's really important to recognize the legacy of sexism and how that has, you know, how people, women are, have that extra danger in terms of, especially being homeless and the threat of violence. I'm glad people talked about domestic violence, about Safe Passage, important organization. You know, Safe Passage is an organization we should look to support further. There's also the Northampton Recovery Center, which is, I talked earlier about the idea of peer workers. And so if there's, you know, the opioid crisis and other addiction is definitely an issue that, you know, leads to homelessness. And so to have people with that lived experience to work with homeless women and be thinking about that is really important, too.
Our next question will be coming from the Northampton High School Students of Color Alliance.
Hi, my name is Amina McCall Sam, and I'm the co-leader of Northampton High School Students of Color Alliance. Our question is, in your opinion, what do you think is the biggest issue children and young adults face in our community? And how does this specifically affect children of color?
First to answer this question will be Penny Geis, running for Ward Seven.
So as
Oh, excuse me, sorry. No, yeah, Penny Geis, running for Ward Seven.
As someone who lives and loves an extended family that includes all colors you can imagine, this is a really important issue to me. How to include people of all colors is a problem that our nation has struggled with So to be as kind to each person as we can be regardless of their color is incumbent on each of us. So I don't see that the city government is going to change people's opinions, but I see it important for each one of you to be certain that you treat people who are different from you as beloved human beings.
Yeah, so I think our young people here and everywhere are facing a very uncertain future with climate emergency, with student debt, with jobs. And I think this particularly impacts young people of color. And here in Northampton, I mean, there's some, I think there's some initiatives we could take on that could make a big difference. For example, I believe at the high school, there's only like seven and a half percent teachers and employees of color, but like maybe more like 30%, you all probably know this better than me, but there's 30% student body that identifies as people of color. And you really need those role models. I mean, statistics show that having, that makes a huge difference in engagement in school and future success to have role models that look like you and are doing things that you want to do. And so I think it gets back to making this a welcoming city, an affordable city, having transportation and housing and all those things that we need to attract younger people because younger people are also the most diverse generation in U.S.
So a few years ago, some classmates of my older son here at Northampton High made a video about race relations and the various relationships here at Northampton High. And one of the things that came out of it was that a lot of the people of color here at Northampton High are concerned because there aren't as many adults in the building that look like them. And I mentioned this last week, we had another forum where we talked about how the committees in Northampton and the offices, the elected offices, don't necessarily represent that Northampton is 10% not Caucasian. And so I think through hiring practices, through committee engagement and so forth, we should be engaging, you know, our people of color in this we should be engaging, you know, our, our people of color in this community and getting them involved as much as we can in hopes that, you know, like we've talked about with, with vaping, we've talked about it with 16-year-old voters, we've talked about it with, with a couple of questions about how to help homeless people. It's about engagement, right? And it's about giving people a voice and, and giving them someone to, to look up to and connect with.
See, I think I want to go back to, my overall philosophy of this is to increase the number of people who are, are at the table. When I go, when I go back to an issue that other people have brought up really successfully, it's the issue of having childcare at meetings. You know, I've got kids here tonight, and, you know, there's probably other people who have kids who can't attend. And I think increasing, increasing the, the range of people who are available to participate in meetings is a way of changing the, the conversation that's being had, because, you know, if you're, if you're not at the table, you're on the menu, right? That's the old saying. And I think one of the most important things we can do when around the issues of things that are facing young people, I think, I think realistically speaking, my, my main concern is that when you look at what happened in Europe with the, with the influx of people from the Syrian, Syrian refugee crisis, that we won't pass the test. My fear is that as a civilization, we're not going to be able to accommodate people in a, in a friendly democratic way. And I don't want that to happen. So vulnerable populations are the first populations to suffer, and I think what we have to do is do the hard work now to make sure that we are not going to be those kinds of, you know, failed democratic experience, experiments, which is pretty dark, but whatever, you know, like, you asked the questions.
So I think, you know, one of my sort of guiding principles as, as I thought about running and as I'm, you know, in this process, is to look around who's in the room, and this is amazing, you're all here in the room, but then think about who's not here, and maybe what are the barriers to being here, and, and recognizing that just because people aren't, because we're inviting people in, doesn't mean they're going to feel comfortable or as a part of the process. And so I think we also need to be creative and not say, hey, you know, we have this meeting coming up, why don't you come? But then also think, how can we be more inclusive? Can we go to where people are living? Can we explain the process of what happens when you come to a meeting, or what it looks like to do public comment at a city council meeting, say, before somebody comes? And try to sort of crack that door open a little bit, demystify the process, but also not expect people to join the process as it exists, but to be willing to bend the process to invite more voices in.
So I'd say first, the first part of the question was, what are the biggest challenges facing children and young adults? So I'd say wealth inequality and climate change. And so because of the legacy of racism, you know, black families, for example, have a net worth that is a fraction of the average white family. And so we need, as we're looking at our policies, we need to be saying, okay, are these policies racist, or are these policies affecting people of color differently? Even if we don't intend that, I don't think, so an example has to do with zoning. And when zoning was first established in the early part of the 20th century, it was explicitly stated, we want to keep low-income people and people of color out of certain neighborhoods. And now, most of us do not, that is not our intention, but do we need to look at, is the way that we structure our community causing those issues? And I didn't really get to, so civic engagement as well, very important, reaching out, having events and forums, not at City Hall.
Some perspective, I, I was around firsthand and watched Martin Luther King give his, let's, I Have a Dream speech on the National Mall. I watched the Watts riots on TV in my youth, younger than you guys are. We are a better world now than we were then, and a lot of that is federal legislation, voter rights, Civil Rights Act. It has made things better than it used to be. But each generation is responsible to continue to raise the bar. At this point, I think we've legislated what we can legislate. What we have to do now is make sure in the hearts of each individual, they understand what's hurtful, undersize, understand what discriminates against people of color, against people with different sexual persuasions. We just need to do it on a personal level. We've legislated, it's got better, but, you know, the baton's going to be passed to your generation shortly, and you, you need to take it to your heart.
Northampton High School Democrats will be asking the next question.
My name is Evan LeBeau, and I am one of the co-chairs of the Northampton Chapter of Massachusetts High School Democrats. This month, the Massachusetts Senate passed a $1.5 billion education bill. How would this new funding affect Northampton Public Schools? And what would you do as a city councillor to fight for higher funding for the arts, greater access to advanced classwork for low-income students, and higher salary for the district's teachers? Thank you.
First answering this question will be Rachel Maori, running for Ward Seven.
Right, yeah, so it's really exciting, what's happening now, and it's really a testament to the power of organizing. Our schools are not being appropriately funded, and we need to fix the funding formula, but we really need a comprehensive overhaul of how we fund our schools. And this is a, a good start. But we're going to need to keep the pressure on the legislature, and we really need to have a united voice, especially from Western Mass. So I think a lot of it's going to be advocating at the state level to take the burden off municipalities, so that we can fund the arts, that we can fund the things that would enrich our community. So we really need to lift all boats here, and, you know, as a city councillor, I'll continue to be a staunch supporter of public education. I've been working on Fund Our Future, I've been working on other initiatives around this, and I think it's an exciting time to, to change the, the chronic underfunding that's, that's, it's our legacy right now.
We, echoing what, what Rachel said, you know, we need Fund Our Future, we need to understand that the funding formula here affects Northampton in a negative way. And one of the things that, that I think irks me a lot is when you understand what's happening with the charter schools and our school funding. My, you know, I, I feel that, that when you look at the fact that this school didn't have a musical for a few years because we didn't have funds for it, I think that's, that's really a terrible thing. And specifically, I look back fondly, my brother was an actor here at Northampton High, participating in a number of musicals right on this very stage, much better than I'm doing tonight. But what he had brought from that was a lifelong love of acting. He's a professional actor now. He didn't have to go to a performing arts school to learn that. He learned it at a public school when the funding was there to run a musical, and we had a terrific musical teacher at the time, Noreen Tyler, she did an incredible job with him. And so beyond that, I just feel that, that straightening out the funding specifically on how charter schools take away from our schools, maybe we could offer some of those things that we're losing. Thank you.
So I think, to follow up on that, I, I think the recent legislation is overall positive based upon what I've heard, I don't entirely understand it because it's new. But I will say like, on the sort of macro scale, I think when you, when you drill down to city budgets and you see the amount of money that goes to paying for health insurance costs, the amount of money that goes for paying retirement costs, and I think it's great, people paid into our city for, you know, they worked in our city for a long time, and they, they owe, they're owed something, right? But at the same time, the amount of federal, you know, federal state money that goes to that has been diminishing, you know, we, and I think really what we need to do is we need to get cities and towns out of the business of providing health, health insurance and providing retirement to people. And I think what we need is a federal or state, basically like a buyout of that obligation, so that it's passed on to federal and state governments. Because otherwise, you know, we're not paying for roads, we're not paying for teachers, we're paying for these increasing costs that are fixed and that people deserve, but, you know, everybody, it's, it's a vanishing pie. So yeah, that's my solution. It's not the solution that's out there, but I think it is the, probably the solution that'd be the best.
I think the legislation is, is a step in the right direction, it's not a be-all and end-all. But that being said, I think that a role of local government is to work with our state government. And, you know, I think Lindsay Sabodosa and Joe Comerford are both doing a great job advocating for the schools. And in addition, you know, our state-level income tax is, is, you know, it's a flat tax, it's not providing the funds needed for cities and towns across the Commonwealth, it's not just Northampton. So really, working with Lindsay and Joe to advocate for what they can do on the state level regarding school funding, but then also sort of on the larger level, advocating for more progressive tax policies, because we, we do have to pay for our services, and we know that paying for them using a property tax is a regressive way of paying for it. At the same time, it's the option we have right now, and so we can advocate and we can do better, but it's, it's at a state level.
Yeah, definitely want to echo what folks said about advocating on a state level. The, so, you know, in terms of what the powers, specific powers of the city council, it's the school committee that would make the individual decisions around, okay, if we get more money, where is that going to go? But, you know, we can certainly advocate. The city council does approve the mayor's budget, and there's actually a provision of state law where if the school committee recommends it, the, the city council can override the, the mayor's amount that the mayor has set and actually give more. It's only for schools, and it's only, and it's a two-thirds majority. So it's just something, you know, obviously we want to work with as much as possible, but it's, it's something where potentially we could add more funding if we were willing to cut somewhere else.
Proposition two and a half constrains how much money the city can raise every year. State law, we can only raise so much under the formula. I'm glad Senator Comerford and the state's education budget indicated that she wanted the Department of Education to study the effects of Proposition two and a half on limiting what municipalities could spend on their schools, because municipalities only have so much money. To put it in perspective, in Northampton, a large department budget is about $6 million. Police gets around $6 million, fire gets around $6 million, all of general government gets $6 million. Between Northampton Public Schools and Smith-Vogue, it's $40 million. Over 50 cents on the property tax dollar in Northampton goes to the schools. We need the state to deal with their formula, because with two and a half, we're out of money.
So by now, it's no secret that money is the root of this problem. It is embarrassing, it is shameful that our school teachers are making, on average, 20% of what the Emmer school teachers are making. This is not a poor town. We have to do something about the funding and make sure our schools are funded and our teachers are funded adequately. One of the problems we have with this is that sometimes people send their children, they don't think the public schools are good enough, and so they send their children to charter schools. And that makes it even harder for our public schools to have enough money, because it takes way more money away from our public schools than if someone just goes to another public school, ordinary public school. So money and the effect of charter schools on the money we have are really big problems that are going to force us to take a new look at how we fund our schools.
Our next and final question will be coming from the Northampton High School Environmental Club.
My question is, how will you help make Northampton schools more sustainable by implementing things like solar panels, more electric school buses, as was mentioned, and gray water systems, for example?
That's me.
Yes, Michael Quinlan, running for Ward One.
You know, I, I think we've worked really hard in Northampton to, to not just educate the children here, the, the students, about what a sustainable structure would look like around our schools with, with solar panels on top of every school building. But, but in addition, we've, we've walked that walk as well. So, you know, in terms of what I would do, I'm, I'm not sure that, that I have specific ideas that I would, that I would want to throw into the ring now, when there are people that have much more expertise than me about it. That said, sustainability is, is key here, and I think, you know, we've, we, we didn't address it tonight exactly, but, but I think everybody on the stage understands and spoke at one point or another about the climate being one of the great issues of all time. So whatever we can do, I would be in support of, because I feel that it's something that, that, you know, our young people advocate for, like you have, and, and I'd love to be a part of it.
So I think it gets down to the role, the role of city council. You ask the questions during the budget review process, you ask how it benefits sustainability within the schools, and then you vote according to your principles. I, I'm trying to walk a fine line here, but I know that there's capital improvement plans that are in place, but, and I know that there's long-term, you know, you know, funding obligations that are in place also. But realistically speaking, I think if you're not willing to, you know, vote in favor of things that increase, you know, sustainable, sustainable initiatives in the, in the schools, they're, they're not going to happen. I do, I do think climate literacy is a really important topic for young people these days, just understanding the sort of like range of, of the science right now, and, and the difference between mitigation strategies and adaptation strategies. So I think reviewing stuff on a financial way and from budget documents, according to how they implement the two different categories of, you know, you have mitigation, which would be carbon reduction, and you have adaptation. And I think making sure that there's always a strategy for each of those in every single budget document is really critical now.
My answer was going to be a bit like Andrea's, in that, you know, it's the specific strategies, I think, I don't necessarily view the schools as separate from the municipality as far as, as an overall strategy regarding funding and working on climate mitigation strategies, you know? So I think that as city council's job is to review capital improvements and review budgeting. And I think that those are, are the points we need to be raising and asking to see in the budgets, and that I, I view that as being across the city departments, including the schools.
Yeah, so continuing the work around having net-zero energy buildings and increasing the efficiency and looking at the payoff periods and realizing that in some cases, you know, it's really worth it to spend an extra money now and, and do a bond for a certain amount of time, because those payoff periods and just what you save in energy are not that long. I think it's worth talking about busing and the idea of how much time and congestion and climate damage is there from not, from our current busing system for the schools, where, you know, people, so many people are driven to school because there's no busing for, for a certain distance, or you have to, and you have to pay for it. And so one thing that they do in Springfield is it's integrated with the, the public transit is actually integrated with the school busing for certain periods, so that there's helper buses that run on existing routes. And so thinking about lining up those schedules and, and then lastly, letting students lead, you know, JFK students have contacted pedal people and working on reducing food waste, and so just looking at where they're, they're leading and following them.
I'm pleased to be able to say that a lot of this is on the drawing board right now. We're in the middle of doing the capital plan for FY '21 and '22, and in each of those years, the mayor has asked for something in the range of $60,000 to study the energy efficiency of all the city's buildings, and the six large, the six large ones are the schools. So that's already taking place. That came from the mayor, the Central Services Division that does the building management is actually working on funding to update the controls for the energy systems in this building and, and the Kennedy School Building. I think Kennedy comes first. But that's actually being talked about now, that's actually going to be in the capital plan that we get approved with the 2021 budget. So I'm pleased to say that that actually is, is on the table, is working for funding and is going to go forward. So thank you for the question.
Installing energy efficiency in our schools in the long run actually helps fund our schools. So not only do we need to be installing insulation and energy reduction uses, but we need to be, as a city, installing the kind of equipment that will respond to the need to reduce our peak usage at particular times of use. Remember this summer, there were three days when we all melted? Those three days were the days that we had to turn on the most polluting coal- Those three days were the days that we had to turn on the most polluting coal-fired plants. So by being able to reduce the use those particular hours, any year that you have it, helps us reduce the carbon pollution that coal-fired plants are putting into the air.
Yeah, I mean, schools, it's a great model to have that, those kind of initiatives at a school. And, but as Karen said, it's really part of the larger push in our entire municipality, and can be treated as such. It will take investment, it will take grants, it will take vision. And I think who will play an important role in that is resident groups, actually. I think the residents working with city government, keeping everyone on track, because there's a lot of push and pull and needs. But I think in an engaged city like Northampton, it's going to be you, the residents, that will help usher that in, along with city government.
Each candidate will now have 90 seconds to make a closing statement, starting with Alex Garrett.
Great. Yeah, thank you all so much for coming. It's been really great to be here. In closing, I wanted to sort of summarize what I'll bring. So first is engagement. You know, I want, I've knocked on about 1,500 doors in the ward and met people of, and I want to know what you want, and what's working, and what doesn't work. And if I'm elected, you're going to keep hearing from me, and I'm going to, you know, have listening sessions out in the ward. I'm going to continue to knock on doors, because I feel that is the best way to hear from people. So I want to, I'll bring an understanding of social justice and the need to hear all voices, as I talked about. So I understand oppression and wealth inequality, and will work to under, to look at those in our systems, and work to create things that'll, that'll change that. You know, we need a progressive tax system, really, and we'll work to lobby for that. And climate change, you know, our house is on fire. There is an emergency, and I think municipalities are taking the lead, because we're not seeing leadership from the federal government, and not enough on the state level. So, and we can do that and inspire others. I'm excited and passionate and dedicated, interested. I have time for this work. And I'm interested in, you know, the big picture to the little details. And I'm asking for your vote, because change is coming faster than we are currently ready. And let's move together.
You know, I consider myself an extremely fortunate person, because I grew up in Northampton. I'm a lifelong resident. I attended Northampton Public Schools. I belong to social groups and scouting and had a wonderful time here. I went off to college. When I got back from college, I started to volunteer to the city that I grew up in for 40 years, from cable television to city council. Forty years, 14 of them on the council. And one thing has become very evident to me in all the time I've spent in this city, that our most valuable resource, our most valuable renewable resource, is you guys, our students, our young people. Because you're our future. And you talk about what we're going to do, what's more important than what we're going to do is what you're going to do, because the future is yours. So thank you. I think it's a good sign you're having this debate this evening. You're bringing us here, you're getting engaged, you're wanting to vote. Those are all bright signs to me. So keep up the good work. And again, thank you for having me here tonight.
Amen to that. You're our future. I'm going to ask you to do something as you leave. On my table out in the hall, there are brochures about Northampton Community Network. In addition to caring about energy and climate change, one of the important infrastructure for our future is, is the internet. And there's a group of us who are, who have been working hard. The city council has just approved funding for two studies to see whether you are interested in having a community-owned fiber optic network to every home and business. If you are, it's important for you to watch for the survey that comes to you, and to make sure that your household responds to it, because we're not going to do it if people aren't interested in supporting it. This is something that will give you net neutrality, will give you fast upload as well as download speeds, and will protect your privacy. It will be owned by us, all of us, and used for us, just like the roads. We own them, we don't provide the service, you know, other people drive on them. It's possible to have competition if we provide the infrastructure. So pick one of these up and watch for the survey when it comes.
What an honor to kind of close off all the forums for this election season. I just really wanted to reiterate that, you know, a city councillor and a lot of the city positions, they're supposed to be conduits, conduits for the residents. And so you set the priorities. I think my strong advocacy skills will come into play, because I think a lot of what we need to do is also advocate at the state level, while we try to create what we want to see locally. I want to thank the Mayor's Youth Commission and all of the cosponsors. And we're all very proud that we have such engaged young people. But here's the thing, the burden shouldn't be on you. We can't just applaud you. We need to practically support you, whether it's changing, revising your sex ed program, gun control, getting our schools fully funded around climate change. It's really up to all of us. We all have a responsibility to work towards these changes. And the more unified our voices, and the more of us who do so, the more effective we're going to be. Thank you.
My family moved to Northampton in 1976, just in time for me to go to Kennedy Garden here. I went around the corner at Vernon Street, and it closed that year. And then I went to Jackson Street, and to JFK, and here to Northampton High. My father was a teacher at Smith-Vogue Cational, and that change happened in 1976 because he was hired to teach there. It gave my parents the chance to buy a home they had rented prior to that. It gave them a different trajectory in life as it did for my brother and I, as well. My wife and I moved out of town into a house in Belcher Town and moved back when our children were approaching school age. So we came here, because on the seal of the city of Northampton, there are three words, and they're in Latin, but when you translate them to English, they translate to caring, education, and justice. And I'm stunned by that, because that, that seal was created a long time ago, right? Many moons ago. But that's what the city stood for then, and I believe that that's what the city still stands for now. And those three words are why I'm running for city council, because I believe in this caring community, I believe in our fine education system, and I believe in treating everyone justly.
Okay, so this might, you know, this, this is it. This is the last statement I'm probably going to make. So, so why don't, I just want to say that I didn't, I didn't grow up here. I grew up in North Carolina and Tennessee. I've seen so much of the country, and I can tell you there are not a lot of places that are like Northampton. And so this place is really special to me. And the reason why I'm running is because I care deeply about this community. I care about what has happened here, what can happen here, what everybody, what it means to people to be from here, and how much we all value each other. I think just the fact that I've been lucky enough to be on stage with all these six other candidates, who, any one of these people I would rather have running our country than anyone else who's doing it right now. You know, there's so many decent, kind, caring people in this community who have so many wonderful ideas, and I just feel really fortunate to think that I get to be one of you. So I don't know who you've decided to vote for, I don't know what your thoughts are, but if you do decide to vote, then please vote for me, and also any of these other people too. Just, just go out and vote. Get in the habit early and do it. And to follow what Rachel's saying, I do feel like it is, it's not incumbent upon us to say that this is, that the world is, is yours and you have to fix it now. I think it's our responsibility to put it in a good condition for you when you, when you take over. So I think that's part of the reason why I'm running, is because I want to at least feel decent about who I am as a person when it's time for me to leave, and knowing that I did everything I could to make sure that you have a decent world that you can live in. So that's why I'm running, and hope you, hope you guys, hope you guys like what you hear.
So I think the moment I decided to run for city council was in 2016, when Trump was elected. I think Michael and I have led similar trajectories. I was actually living in Belcher Town with my family. I was working on a private contract supporting a fifth grader from a Northampton Public School in accessing her class field trip to Nature's Classroom. And it was on the election day and the day after, it was a two-day field trip. And I remember the day after, right? I had to get up and drive to Beckett, and I was just devastated. I couldn't, I didn't quite get that this was happening. And I was living in Belcher Town, and I just stopped at the Roost for a cup of coffee, because Northampton was where I needed to be. I moved here in 2004 in a snowstorm, and my car got stuck while I was moving into my rental room in Florence, and somebody came out and shoveled the street so I could get my car into the driveway. And that was when Northampton was home. And looking, you know, all these fifth graders in the eye, and this young woman of color with multiple disabilities that I was supporting on this field trip when Trump was elected, that's when I got it. It's up to us, that's when I really got it, that I'm now of that generation. I'm 41. It's time for me now to take an active role in my community. Yes, I have young kids, but I also have a lot of skills. I run a nonprofit. We work on state and federal contracts and grant monies. I know how to budget, I know how to lead, I know how to include people. And I'm really excited to be able to use what I have to give back to this really special community.
That wraps up our event for the evening. I want to thank all of you so much for coming. That's the first thank you. I want to thank our wonderful candidates for showing up and giving such thoughtful answers on all these questions. I want to thank all of our youth cosponsor groups. I want to thank Adina Bromberg-Seltzer for moderating. And I want to thank everybody on the Northampton Mayor's Youth Commission for helping make this event happen. So have a good night, remember to vote, and buy some baked goods on the way out to support the Northampton Mayor's Youth Commission.
Thanks to Noah.